Meeting of June 14th Planning Commission Public Hearing. My name is George Alcaraz. I'm the Chairman of Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Commissioner Horstley and Commissioner Esters will not be in attendance today. Before we get started, I'd like to ask Commissioner Costin to lead us into prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Parks. If everyone can stand, please.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this glorious day which you have made. We pray to God that as we come to deliberate and discuss the matters of business for this city, God, we ask that you would give us insight and wisdom and foresight, oh God, that we may make the best decision for this city and its citizens. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, if I could have our city attorney and then our commissioners, if you can just introduce yourself, just say whatever you'd like to, your occupation and what district you're in. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Kay Wilson. I'm Deputy City Attorney for Land Use, and I represent the Planning Commission.
Hi, I'm Mike Anderson in District Three, live in Kempsville, and I'm in Construction Sales.
And my name is John Costin. I represent District Nine, and I'm retired.
My name is Holly Quayar, and I represent District Eight, and I have a background in governmental affairs.
My name is George Alcaraz. I'm in District Five.
Hi, I'm Catherine Byler, District Four, which is generally the town center area. I'm a real estate broker and an attorney.
I'm Brian Plumlee. I'm an attorney. I work in the town center area, and I live in District Six. I've lived there for 25 years. I represent District Six.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Clemmons, District Two representative, and I'm a professor at Old Dominion University.
William Parks, I represent District Ten, and I'm an architect in Chesapeake.
Kaitlin Alcock, interim planning administrator. I'll go ahead and introduce the staff here today. To my left, clerking, we have Madison Eichels and Shannon Hedrick. We have our director Kathy Warren, deputy director Carrie Bookhold with our planning administration team. We have Wah Dal, Marshall Coleman, Michaela McKenney, and Elizabeth Nowak with zoning. We have our deputy zoning administrator Brandon Hackney and Garrett Canigan. And then with IT, we have Tasha Martinez.
All right, thank you. The next, I'd like to ask our clerk to describe the rules for business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and have favorable staff recommendation. The regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, speakers will be called next. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the Planning Commission today are a form of a recommendation to the City of Virginia Beach Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is consideration for withdrawals. Are there any withdrawals on our applications today? None, thank you. Are there any deferrals today on any applications? I see none. All right, now, at this time, I will be passing over to our interim vice chair, Holly Quayar. She'll handle the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Today, we have eight items on the consent agenda. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers currently signed up in opposition. We're going to go ahead and start with items number one, two, and three, and Kay Wilson, our city attorney, will be speaking on behalf of the city regarding these zoning ordinance changes.
The first three agenda items are ordinance amendments required to be adopted because they were adopted by the General Assembly in 2023. They will take effect on July 1st, even though they will not be voted upon by city council until July 11th. What they do is change the notifications of the public hearings for the city. Number one does changes for BZA. Two and three do wetlands and coastal primary sand dunes. The changes that are being made are that we will have two consecutive publications, as we do now, but they will be done on 14 days before the meeting and then seven days before the meeting. So we will move from Sunday publications of all of the notices to whatever day the meeting is held on. Yours will be done on a Wednesday. Wetlands and sand dune will be done on a Monday. Wetlands and sand dunes also only have to advertise one time a week before, so they will have a Monday advertising, and of course, that will not be in the Beacon, but it will be in the Virginia Pilot legal notices.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson. Is there any opposition to these items being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we will move forward with the next item. Item number four on the agenda, fitness ventures. Is there a representative here today to speak on this item?
Okay, can we just move forward, or should I wait until they are here to speak?
That's up to the board. Unless you have questions for them, we usually just go ahead and put them on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I have asked Commissioner Parks to read the item into the record.
Thank you. The applicant proposes to operate a 5, or sorry, 52,000 square foot indoor recreational facility in a vacant unit of the Chimney Hill Shopping Center. The applicant is proposing new paint and signage to match the branding standards. There is no known opposition, and I recommend it for approval.
The next item is number five, Sarah Long. Is there a representative here today? Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Sarah Long.
And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Thanks.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I have asked Commissioner Plumlee to read this item into the record.
This is a matter in District Six at 523 Hilltop Plaza. The applicant is seeking to operate a tattoo parlor for permanent makeup, to do microblading. They've accepted all the conditions, and everyone indicated during the informal that this is appropriate for consent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number seven, Diane Kitz. Is there a representative here today, Ms. Kitz? Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Alcaraz to read this item into the record.
My apologies, I was not planning to do this. Hold on, let me do it. What item was it? Seven? Yeah. Yeah, it's all right. We got this, if I can find it. Item number seven for Diane Kitz is a use permit for a short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 1405. The conditions have been accepted, and we're recommended for consent.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number eight, Jim Lutz. Is there a representative here today to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Okay. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Having none, we've asked Commissioner Alcaraz to read this into the record.
All right, thank you again. This is an application, Jim Lutz, for short-term rental at 917 Pacific Avenue, Unit D. All conditions are accepted, and we ask for this to be on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, James and Lori Jones. Is there a representative here today to speak on behalf of this? Welcome, and please state your name for the record.
James Jones.
Thank you, and are the conditions acceptable to you?
They are.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Plumlee to read this item into the record.
This is an application, again, in my district, at 1722 Baltic Avenue, for conditional use permit for short-term rental. Under the normal conditions placed upon that use, the applicant has accepted all conditions, and the commission has indicated that there has been no objection made, and it's therefore suitable for the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. That was the last item for our consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Items number one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, and nine.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for these items to be on the consent agenda?
I move that they be placed on the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion for Ms. Quayar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Plumlee.
By a vote of eight to zero, items one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, and nine have been recommended for approval.
Thank you. If you had an application that was approved on the consent agenda, your request will be scheduled for the upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about that date. For those applicants for the consent agenda, thank you for your preparation, I mean, your participation, and please remain, you can stay at the meeting, or you can go ahead and leave if you don't want to hear the next agenda item. So, Madam Clerk, the next item for regular meeting?
Yep. The next item is agenda item number six for Alan Bell. It's a conditional use permit application for home occupation retail sales at 2634 South Kings Road in District Six.
Please come forward, sir. If you could just state your name?
Sure. My name is Alan Bell.
Okay, and if you could just give a little short summary of what you're doing, I think some of the commissioners might have some questions for you.
Okay, sure. I've been running a consulting business since about 2018. Prior to that, I was doing some government contracting. I started with BAE Systems. I moved to another company called Systems Ingenuity, and starting in 2018, things started to grow fairly slowly, but then things sort of picked up speed, and I moved into that full-time. The nature of the consulting that I primarily do is based on things that I have experience and some expertise in, primarily systems engineering and also aviation safety. Lately, that's consisted almost exclusively of unmanned aircraft and the integration of those aircraft into our national airspace system. The support I'm doing is in that area for other companies, one called Mosaic ATM. There's another called Shield. It's an AI company, artificial intelligence company. Another one called Concept Solutions. And ultimately, these companies are supporting other companies like Northrop Grumman, General Dynamics, and ultimately, the final customer winds up being folks like the Navy, the Army, and so on. The other thing that I do in the consulting world is I try to develop more business, and probably the most difficult thing about a business like this is finding that next opportunity, because they're generally for a limited amount of time. One of the other things that I've found myself doing recreationally is I compete as a competitive pistol shooter. I've done that for many years, starting in college, and I've continued here in the area, and I've had a fair amount of success. Because of that, people routinely come to me and ask me questions about my knowledge of firearms in general, especially when it comes to competitive shooting, but that also turns into other questions about firearms, like concealed carry questions. A typical, or an example of a question I fielded recently was, what caliber firearm should my wife carry? And after talking about that for about an hour, we decided maybe it wasn't such a good idea for her to carry a firearm at all. And that's sort of the nature of, I think there's a business opportunity there, because there are a lot of folks in this community that are concerned about firearms. Some of them are concerned because they feel unsafe, they want to carry a firearm, others because they are concerned about the firearms themselves. And in either case, I think there's an opportunity to provide some training and education, and if I can roll that into part of my business, especially in cases where it's in-depth, if somebody really wants to take a deep dive into how to shoot a national match course in NRA competition, that's something that would take some time, depending on their previous experience and their, you know, their expertise with firearms. So, I wish I could tell you I knew exactly who the clients were going to be and how many there are, but what I've found with all the other work that I've done is, it's sort of a cliche, but the best advertising is word of mouth, and if I work with one person and they're happy, they feel like it was well, time well-spent, and they tell a friend, that friend oftentimes becomes the next customer. And to that end, one of the opportunities to socialize with people who are interested in firearms is to go to gun shows. And at a gun show, you can set up a table, you can have any number of things that you can display, and as people come by, if they're interested, you wind up in a conversation. Maybe you can hand them a business card, and perhaps that leads to some other opportunity. And so that's kind of a nutshell explanation of what I'm hoping to do, really take the existing consulting business and expand that to include another area, which would be anything that has to do with firearms.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go and ask the commissioners, some of them have some questions. Can Mr. Plumlee?
Good afternoon. How are you today?
Great, thank you.
So have you been in the consulting business in the field of firearms for a while?
Not professionally. It's only been recreationally and through sort of watercooler conversations, as people have found out, hey, this is someone who owns some firearms, he's, as I mentioned, the success I've had in competitive shooting has gotten me some attention, and people will come to me and ask me very specific questions. What kind of sights do you use? What kind of trigger pull do you use? You know, very, very detailed questions at times.
And for this consulting work, are you required to have any federal or state permits?
You need to have a federal firearms license in order to be able to sell firearms, even to ship them. That's required, and need to send it to another person who has a federal firearms license. So if I were to consult with someone and they were to want to purchase a firearm, typically, I would just refer them to someone else, maybe a distributor or even just a local retailer. But if it happened to be a firearm that I owned and they wanted to purchase that, then I would need that license. A more likely scenario is, as I mentioned, at a gun show, if I were going to be selling a firearm there, again, having a firearm, a federal firearms license, understanding the paperwork that needs to be done, the background checks and all that, that's the only one that I'm aware of that I would need in addition to just the conditional use permit.
So you don't have currently any federal or state permits?
That's correct.
Okay. And are there any other agencies, other than the ones you've mentioned, that regulate the consulting side? Not the selling or shipping, I understand that's different, but the consulting side?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And it's, you've accepted all the conditions that are part of this. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
I appreciate the fact that you've gone through the formal process, filed an application with the city, brought this forward. I do appreciate that. Are your neighbors generally aware of the nature of the consulting work that would be done at your home?
Yes, so, in dealing with the staff, they provided me with a list of people who are adjacent to my property. Each one of them was sent a letter, and prior to that going out, I went and personally visited each one of them. I brought them a copy of my application. In one case, I even had a chance to tour someone else's gun collection.
Okay.
But I did have a chance to talk with all of those people, as well as a few other neighbors in the neighborhood, and that first round was generally very supportive. Just yesterday, I had an email from another person who was really opposed to anything that has to do with firearms in any way, but after talking with her, even she said she had no objections. So I think it's fair to say that everyone that has been exposed to this, I've got the bright orange sign in my yard.
Right.
No one has voiced any opposition, and quite a few have offered to support the initiative if it were needed.
Well, I've not received any direct communication from anybody objecting to it. I just wanted to make sure. You seem like a person of good character. I just wanted to be able to speak to you and look you in the eye and know you a little bit.
Sure.
Just because of the nature of it, but this is a permit that goes, you under, excuse me, the conditional use permit is one that follows the property and not necessarily the person. You're aware of that.
Until you just said that I was not aware of that, but I plan to be there for as long as I'm still around.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
All right, is there any other question? Ms. Byler?
Good afternoon, Catherine Byler. Thanks for coming today. So I don't know much of anything about firearms, and I, my understanding of what you're asking us to do, I don't need to understand firearms. I only need to understand that you intend to have retail operations in a residential area. So I had a couple of questions about that. You placed a huge emphasis just now on training. Is that one-on-one, or is that classroom setting, or how does that training take place, and where would it take place?
So it would almost always be a one-on-one type of arrangement, possibly a two-on-one. For example, it might be like a husband and wife who are both interested at the same time, but those will be done exclusively through a virtual meeting, application, Teams, Zoom, WebEx, something like that. One of the things I'm concerned about is people knowing that there are firearms at my property, I feel like that invites a break-in, and even though there are steps in place to sort of prevent those firearms from being stolen, nobody really wants that exposure. So I don't ever intend to have anyone know my physical address, and certainly not have anyone come to my property as a business can, or a client.
So that's interesting. So I'm just curious, on your webpage, as you're promoting your services and other things, do you not put your address?
For this particular portion of it, I don't even maintain a webpage or any other type of arrangement like that. As I mentioned earlier, the word of mouth has been the most powerful asset that I have, and I generally rely on that for all of the business development that I do.
So you mentioned that you keep firearms on your property, and I'm sure you do it in a safe, secure way that's approved by the feds and everyone else. I don't doubt that. But after this conditional use permit is issued, if in fact it is, will that increase your inventory? And how, I'm concerned about, I'm just curious, how do you receive the guns? Are they, or the firearms, do they come through the post, or do people bring them to you? Do you buy from private sellers? Are there going to be trucks pulling up? How does that happen?
No. So the focus of what I'm trying to do, it really doesn't involve the buying and selling of firearms. That may be part of it, but it's a very small part. What I'm really selling is the training and the education and sharing the knowledge that I have with other people who are willing to pay for that. I'm not planning to, although there, on my sign, it says retail sales, that's really not the focus of what I'm doing. I do have a rather extensive gun collection, at least I think it is, but all of those firearms are stored in a safe, out of sight, and I don't plan to increase that collection significantly unless there's just something I want to own personally. There's a chance that I might sell some of the things that I'm, you know, some of the firearms that I'm not using, but again, that's really no different than what I would do today. The only difference being that to sell it today, I might go to a gun shop and sell it there, or sell it on consignment, something like that. If I also get a federal firearms license, I'll be able to sell that and ship it directly through something like an online service. For example, there's one called Gun Broker, which is very popular. So I could advertise a firearm there. If somebody wants to buy it, I could sell it to another FFL somewhere in the country, and then they could pick it up, for example, at their local gun shop.
So am I correct in thinking, then, that you don't have people coming to your property physically to either show you a gun that you might buy, or to look at your inventory in order to acquire it?
That's correct. I don't anticipate having anyone ever come to my property as part of this business. I would say there's a chance, if I have a close friend, someone who already knows me and knows where I live, then of course, that might be a little bit different, but for just a typical business client, I would not disclose my location or have them come to my property.
So you already have a number of businesses that do consulting, but you've applied for this conditional use permit for this new expansion, if you will, of your consulting business. And now, I guess I'm concerned or surprised why a conditional use permit is needed for this branch if you're already conducting similar businesses.
I wish I could answer that, and had I known the extent of the process to get to this point we're at today, I might have opted out early on.
Right, yeah.
But I'm already a pretty fair ways down this road. One of the direct connections is with the federal firearms license. I applied for that in parallel, and when you fill out that application, one of the things you have to put on it is your address, and when that application was reviewed, they said, you're not zoned for this, so you need to get a conditional use permit in order for us to give you this one. So there's sort of a dependency between the two permits or licenses, and I think that's really the best answer I could give you, because had that not been there, I may very well have been able to fold this under my existing consulting service without ever bothering you.
Well, you're certainly not bothering us. This is what we volunteered for, but thank you for being patient and explaining to me.
Sure, my pleasure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Byler?
Yes.
Okay. We get a chance.
Hi, I just wanted to, this ties along with what Commissioner Byler was saying, is that you have, though, applied for the FFL license, and that would give you the opportunity to tangibly sell a firearm. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which is not your focus at this time, but should this business grow, and then that would give you that opportunity? And then the condition, though, of course, in this application is such that that would all be virtual, or like through a third party, with someone else who would have an FFL license?
Once I have the FFL, if this business were to take off, this is something, you know, the systems engineering work that I do and the aviation safety, it pays well, but it's not the most interesting work in the world, and as I get closer to retirement age, I've thought that maybe owning a gun store at someplace might be something I'd be interested in doing as a retirement activity. It's something I really enjoy doing, and if you can combine the work with the pleasure, it's a little bit easier to tolerate. But at the moment, the way you described it is exactly the way I anticipate for, say, the next 10 years or so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Plumlee?
I just wanted to say, if anybody was watching the hearing, then probably not a soul out there is ever going to watch this hearing, but that the condition that you agreed to is there will be no exchange of firearms, nor whether it be customers onsite, as all sales and services will be conducted virtually. So that is a condition of this permit, just to state that, you acknowledge that, you understand that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is there any other questions? All right, there's no, just have, just stand there for a second. So I guess formally, he's just going to ask, is there any other speakers, Madam Clerk? None?
None.
Okay, so there's no rebut, so you may be seated. Okay, so there's no rebut, so you may be seated, and we're going to go ahead and vote.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional? Mr. Costin, did you want to say something?
No.
Oh, your speaker's on.
I'm going to support it.
Okay, you're going to support. Does anybody else want, we're good? All right, Mr. Costin?
I move that we approve this application.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Costin. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Quayar.
The vote is now open. Commissioner Byler and Commissioner Clemmons, waiting on your votes. Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, item six has been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you for attending. That completes our Planning Commission hearing. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.